Calling today the Board of Supervisors meeting for January 12, 2020-21. I'm calling the meeting to order. I'm asking that all of you that are able to please stand and join us in stating the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just want to state that due to the pandemic and limiting in-person gatherings, we are holding the meeting via Zoom or having access via Zoom per Code Section 21.8.1. Before we get started with today's agenda, we do have some members of the board here that would like to make some comments with no action that will be, with no action that will be being taken. We'll start with Supervisor Faisal.
Thanks. Thanks for giving me a few minutes. Like a lot of other people, the events of the past week have left me feeling shaken, and I felt like I just needed to say a few things. First, that what happened in DC was an attack on our democracy. And sad and disappointed because this is not how we resolve our differences in the United States of America. Violence and looting in the halls of Congress and attempting to stop the process of government is not democracy. Our republic is only as strong as our commitment to our Constitution, and we can do better. Second, I believe it's incumbent upon us as elected officials to call out the disparate response to the known and stated threats of violence on January 6 compared with the response to people protesting for racial justice. This is hard and painful on so many levels, and I don't pretend to have answers, but I feel very strongly that it's important for us in leadership to speak up. And we're the ones holding the microphones, so we have a duty to keep the conversations Last, I just ask that everyone refrain from violence. Our ability to peacefully disagree is part of what makes our nation great, and praying that we can heal the anger and the pain in our nation quickly. Thanks for giving me a few minutes.
Thank you for your comments. Supervisor Merkin?
Thank you, Supervisor Faisal. I agree with everything which you said, and I also have a statement of my own to read. I wrote it out because I knew I could talk for half an hour if I got started, and nobody wants that. So here's, here are my thoughts. It is appropriate that elected officials condemn senseless endangerments acts of violence. It is essential that we do so when the violence was incited by the words and actions of a fellow elected official. I join Supervisor Faisal in condemning the words and actions of President Trump and other elected officials in inciting people to use violence to intimidate members of Congress and to prevent them from doing their job and certifying the results of last November's election. Saying that, our country needs to heal. We all know the reasons why: pandemic, locally what's happened in the Midwest with the duratio last August, divisive election, and now this. What is harder is to figure out how to aid in the healing. I firmly believe that one way we can do this is to celebrate the positive actions by many, not just condemning the actions of a few. Among those who deserve our admiration, I've got a list here, and I'm going to read it quickly. First is obviously our healthcare workers who attended to so many people affected by COVID-19, most notably in our hospitals and long-term care facilities. I also want to include in this category all the corrections and jail workers and staff of other residential care facilities who have continued to care for and supervise residents when COVID became a reality there also. Secondly, our county auditors and their counterparts in other states who performed admirably in administering fair and accessible elections in the municipal pandemic. Third, judges who denied vague charges of election fraud, and Secretaries of State who resisted attempts at coercion and threats intended to overturn the election results. Next, the objective journalists and reporters who investigate and report the news without bias. Without objective information, we're lost in making sense of these events. Also, public officials who rose to the challenge of finding ways to provide services safely to their customers despite the pandemic. I know mostly about the efforts of Story County employees and applaud them, but I'm sure their counterparts throughout our state and nation perform with equal dedication. And most importantly, the voters who turned out in record numbers to vote throughout elections in 2020, some standing in long lines for hours in the midst of a pandemic because they believed their vote was more important than ever. Let us never again tolerate attempts to take away our votes. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Merkin. And I didn't make prepared remarks because I felt I could start writing and still be writing. I too was saddened, hurt, shocked at the events this past week, and really had a hard time putting down my actual feelings on it because there were just so many emotions going on. You know, I do believe you have to have accountability. You have to have accountability with the situations that arise like this. But we are so divided as a nation, and we have to start talking to each other more and listening and come together because we are not going to be able to move forward if we don't take those actions. So I thank you both for your comments today, and I hope that moving forward, our nation can figure out the path to continue to have constructive conversations and rest here to do the work for the people of Story County. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adopt today's agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Merkin, seconded by Faisal. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Tedden? Aye. Updates on COVID-19? Are there any updates from staff on COVID-19? Hearing none. I did take a look at the numbers, although I have, I was doing them daily, so actually this is from a week ago. So from last Tuesday to this Tuesday, pretty stark numbers, there have been 13,175 new cases in one week's timeframe and 147 deaths statewide. Now, that was as of about 9:40 this morning. I know they can update closer to 10, so those may have changed a little bit. Story County in a week's time had 363 new cases and one additional death. So we are certainly not through this pandemic yet. I know vaccines have begun to be rolled out, but it's certainly going to be quite some time before we all are able to have access to those vaccines and to obtain that herd immunity that they're hoping that we threshold that we can, can meet.
And I thought that says that also. I sat in on a webinar that IDPH did last, last week, and whereas they kept saying, you know, this is preliminary when we think, you know, this is going to happen, we don't have all of the 1A, the categories in Iowa. We don't have all of the 1A people vaccinated yet, far from it, and that's the healthcare workers in the long-term care facility, our residents. And then when you get to 1B, the next one is going to be a very, very large group. You know, teachers are going to be included in there, it sounds like. You know, there's going to be a lot of essential workers that are included in that. And I think the people in the, you know, the higher, larger, or the longer, longer-lived people, let's put it that way, are going to be in there. There's two separate categories for those, one's the 75s and the 70s, and then the 64 to 75. So there's that, and it's simply going to take months to get through, and law enforcement, first responders, all those folks, there are just a lot of people. So by the time, so it's going to be a long time relatively compared to what people might be thinking before the vaccine can reasonably get out to everybody. And that's why it's really going to be important that can maintain the social distancing, and we're in face coverings, and eliminate, you know, not gathering, no large gatherings. Those things are all going to be important until we get the vast majority of people vaccinated. They just really continue to express that. So I, so thank you for bringing it up, because I'm sure, I think it's important that when you think about the patients we still need.
Right, right. Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Merkin. We'll move on to public comments. This is the comment period for the public to address topics on today's agenda. We'll open the public comment time. If you'd like to make public comments or make comments on today's agenda, please raise your hand if you're on Zoom or if you're on the phone. It's star nine, star nine. Are you seeing anything, Leanne? Okay, seeing, seeing no, no one wanting to make public comments. We'll close, we'll close the public comment period. We'll move on next to discussion and consideration of items brought before the board with requests for immediate action. Is, see if there is any. Doesn't look like there's any at this time. So we'll move on to the presentation and consideration of funding for the Nevada Field House project at the $600,000 lump sum or over a span of years. Looks like we might have, is it Michelle Kassebaum, Tim Hanson, and Jordan Cook presenting today?
Good morning. Can you hear us?
Morning.
So I have here today Jordan Cook, Sarah Clausen, Tim Hanson, John Hall, and myself. Do you know, if we can actually present our slide deck, how would you like us to do that?
Yeah, can you share that, or do you have that, or does it need to be shared? Yeah.
It's up on your screen, yeah.
No.
Here it comes. Great. Perfect. Well, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to meet with you all, and we're going to kind of tag-team this presentation so that we can cover all of the bases and really explain to you what's going on with this project and hopefully leave everybody with clear expectations of where we are and where we're going. So the first thing I want to do is on slide number two is talk to you about the Nevada Foundation. When we decided to do this project, it became clear that we no longer have a vehicle in our community to facilitate this type of philanthropy. And so we decided that it was very important that we create an organization that would live beyond this particular project and can serve as the ability to house many projects for our community as we look forward to the years ahead. So right now, we have a Board of Directors, and as you can see, it is comprised of many people throughout the community. We do have someone from the school, we have someone from the city, we also have someone from NEDC, someone from historical preservation that are standing seats, and then all of the rest are community members that have agreed to serve in this particular role. And so the Nevada Foundation will be the vehicle that will receive business and personal gifts for this particular project, and then we'll be using this vehicle for other projects moving forward in our community. Next slide, please.
So on the next slide, we talk a little bit about our journey in Nevada, and Nevada has sustained tremendous growth over the last 20 years, and it's largely been attributed to our strategic planning, which really started in 1998, if anyone's familiar with our, our Vision 2020 document. And that's what really kicked us off. And in 2015, we had some community stakeholders revisit 2020, Vision 2020, and they identified that there were some unfinished projects, and that resulted in what we called the Capstone Project, so Nevada Vision 2020 Capstone Project. And that was unveiled in 2017. This is a joint project with the school, Nevada Middle School District, and it included and resulted in the construction of the high school baseball facility and the hopes of an indoor field house and the future of what would happen with Gates Memorial Hall. On to the next slide, the Field House story.
So there was a group that was created, and we had a joint effort with the city and Story County Medical Center, and the facility came in at a cost of about 15 to 18 million. And as a community, this was just unattainable. We didn't feel that we could support this size of a project in, in the community. And so it was moved then to the city leaders to develop a plan that was more affordable. And so Parks and Rec went to work and developed a plan, and unfortunately, in 2018, this was not a budget priority. So then in 2019, the city of Nevada did earmark $4.5 million for this indoor facility. And right now, we have a current cost and estimated at $7 million. And so that brings us to where we are today and moving forward with this project that is basically a right-size and a right-priced project, we believe, for our community. So we'd like to share with you just a little bit about what the project's going to entail.
So on the next slide, you'll see the renderings provided by our partners at Rosen Maki Harris. And you, I won't drill into each of the sections because you can, you can see that better than I can on the screen. But in general, you know, the purpose of this building is to act as a year-round facility program-based that is affordable and functional with amenities that can serve all the citizens in Nevada, including our neighboring communities, so eastern Story County folks. So we will move on to slides which show a little bit about each of the spaces within the facility. So Michelle, you can talk about the outside and I'll go inside.
Sure. So one of the things that we did as we've been through this project and many iterations of where this project is best, should serve our community, we landed out at Score Park. And one of the benefits of being out at Score Park is we have infrastructure there, so we do not have to build parking, we don't have to bring our water, we don't have to bring our roads, we don't have any infrastructure that we have to bring other than actually the building of the actual facility. So this right-sized facility is about 40,000 square feet on the main floor, and then we have a second floor that also has an additional 16,000 square feet, and it'll be situated right between the high school baseball fields and Posset Family Aquatic Center. Next slide, please.
This next slide features, one of the feature areas are basketball courts. We have, the basketball courts are full-size, open for any age, appropriate practice times will be allowed. We have a lot of rec sports in our community and neighboring communities, especially through the Central Iowa Rec League, and we have the potential to host a lot of tournaments, basketball tournaments, volleyball tournaments, and allow for just more growth with indoor rec programming in our community and all of Story County, both for youth and adults. And so we feel that the basketball courts are a much-needed addition to the Field House.
Next slide, please. One of the things that was identified was indoor turf. This is something there's not, a lot available in our community. And so this flex space that we've created is going to allow a multitude of activities, so soccer, football, baseball, free play for four-year-olds who in the middle of the winter on, on a day when it's 20 degrees below, they might want to just get outside and run around. So this particular area is definitely probably one of the most needed and flexible spaces that we have for our community. Next slide, please.
Again, a 20-below-degree day, we might want the use of an indoor playground, and this is a shared space where there will feature a playground, but it's an opportunity for families to get out year-round, take advantage of an indoor playground. Maybe the family is waiting for one of their other children to begin with practice or a game, and they can take their younger children to the playground. It's just an opportunity for siblings to hang out together and, and just a focal point of the whole indoor lobby space area, just the shared common space that people can engage with one another.
Next slide, please. And next you see is the commons area, which is, if you notice the glass that, that is in the back of this, so one of the things in designing this was that when we have families with varying ages of children, being able to utilize all of this space. So you may have kids playing on the basketball court, and you'll be able to watch your young person playing basketball while your three-year-old might be on the slide. There's also space for, maybe you have to take a Zoom meeting during this too, so you have a commons area where, where you can use this flex space. The idea of this was essentially when we called it Score Indoor, was creating a Score Park but indoor, so it is truly a park indoors as well. Next slide, please.
We next focus on the track, taking you back a little bit to our, the journey. When we were going through all of the various visioning processes and when, when this project kept coming up, the one thing that we kept getting survey information from was our community wanted an indoor track. Our school system has been awesome with providing an indoor track at the high school, but it's often taken over with other activities and sports, and it's, the space is usually interrupted by some other sport. And so this opportunity to have a track, whether it's walking or running, especially for our older community, our 55 and greater said, we want a track. So this elevated track is second level, it'll be three lanes, as you see approximately eight laps to a mile, and we feel that this is one of the, the true features after years and years of survey information that is wanted in this community.
Next slide, please. All right, now I'm going to turn it over to John Hall, and he's going to give a little bit of information of why we're here today.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you all for, for taking the time to allow us to speak this morning. So they get to bring me in to, to make the, the hard ask of you all, but no, but really how we arrived at where we are with, with our asking, with our fundraising is because we've seen pretty tremendous broad-based community support, and that's beyond even just the Nevada boundaries. I believe as part of the packet, you receive letters of support from Parks and Rec partnerships throughout the county, as well as other communities throughout the county, that really show the value of this facility on the eastern side of Story County, but broadly for all of Story County, there's going to be value to be found. One of the major reasons that we're here today for, for an ask and for really what we consider a substantial ask is because we intend to go after a community attractions and tourism grant, known, known statewide as the CAT grant. It's a, it's a grant that requires not only local buy-in and participation from a broad base of stakeholders, but does have a specific requirement about having county participation in the fundraising efforts for the project. The last time that Nevada went after a CAT grant was actually for Score Park, and the folks that were, were part of that effort have, have reminded us all that the last time we were here and did this, we got an allocation from the county, we went down to the, the board and presented, and they said, no, that's not enough, we need you to go get more from your county. So we're, we're very conscious about what the expectations are going to be for these competitive dollars from the state of Iowa, but we're also conscious about making sure that we are maximizing our ability to leverage outside dollars into a project that we have happening here in Story County. We know that this, this Field House will bring us a new tourism opportunity with the indoor, both turf and basketball courts. We know there's tons of, of youth recreation that, that occur, that there are tournaments and, and the like. So hotels both in Nevada and Ames and throughout Story County will, will reap that benefit as well as our restaurants and, and our shopping. So we know that there's value broadly throughout Story County. So our ask here today is we're looking for $600,000 from you all, and we're looking for that over three years, starting in fiscal year 2023. So where we, where we drew this number from and how we arrived there was based on a TIF projection estimate that was provided to you all back in September of 2020, showing that your, your TIF availability really started ramping back up in 2023 to somewhere around 460,000 a year, starting in FY 2023. Given the value of this project that we see throughout Story County, we thought that the use of TIF dollars into this project, starting in FY 2023 and going through FY 2025, at 200,000 a year for those three years to total 600,000, was, was an appropriate ask here today.
Next slide, please.
All right. Currently, we are in the silent phase of the community campaign that is going through March 2021. 600,000 pledged over five years. With the Story County commitment, we will be able to put the application in place and have that put in April 2021. After that, we will start the public phase, which will be the summer and, or spring and summer of 2021. Late spring and early summer is when we will start the bidding process, and then the construction will be late summer. Ribbon cutting, if everything goes, goes to plan and weather cooperates, we will be having our ribbon, ribbon cutting on fall of 2022.
Next slide, please.
And then, so one thing that we've been trying to figure out was the maintenance side of things, and currently, this is what our estimated annual utility costs are, which are, is $60,000. And you might ask how we are going to cover the ongoing costs of the operations and maintenance. So currently, we have a levy set for Gates Hall, and when we sell Gates Hall, we will not have that levy anymore. Therefore, we will open up a little bit of capacity for, for these levies so we can actually increase the debt levy. It will not increase the overall tax, tax for our community, but that will, that will provide sufficient funds for us to continue to operate and maintain this facility.
Next slide, please. So we, we want to take the opportunity to thank you for letting us present today. We would love to answer any questions that any of you might have. We, we are all very passionate about this project. Some of us have been working on it for over 20 years, so we have a lot of history. We also have Tim Hanson from Parks and Rec, and then Jeff Harris has also joined via Zoom to answer any technical questions about the facility. So we will turn that back to you to ask us any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Supervisors, any questions?
I have two questions.
Go ahead.
I'll start, just about the floor plan. I saw mints in the women's restrooms, I saw locker room, I didn't see any showers. See, this is, I just wondered.
No, there, there are not showers planned in this facility. So what we found is a lot of these facilities, when people come and use them, they, they come in, they use the facility for whatever activity they're there for, and then at that point, they leave and return home. So showers just really don't get used much, so we thought it would be better to focus our efforts and our dollars into the actually usable space.
I think one of the other things about that too, Linda, I think that was Linda that asked the question, was, you know, this is a program-based facility, so this facility is not set up to be a membership, like a gym membership. We have several gym, uh, membership facilities in our community, in our county, and so the point was not to compete against business, but to actually provide programming base, and therefore that would be one of the reasons why you wouldn't maybe see like you would in a large fitness center where they have a big locker room.
That, that, I have another design question, and then I'd like to talk about the program-based facility concept, so I understand that. So the design question would be, because of the last nine or 10 months, all the things that we've had to do throughout our communities because of the pandemic, are there any design changes you think you may want to incorporate into the, what you have right now, or are you feeling like it's set up okay for the challenges, you know? Heaven forbid, but if there's another situation like COVID might.
Yes, I, I think at this point, I think we feel comfortable with the setup that we currently have and dealing with some of those challenges. You know, through the last eight to, you know, 10 months, we've learned an awful lot about COVID and how to deal with it, and so looking at this facility, I think we can, you know, we can successfully, you know, operate in what we have designed.
Can I go back to the program-based facility? So what income are you, I assume that means programs will pay fees, and that will be annual income? I mean, if somebody's doing a tournament there or something like that, are you I mean, if somebody's doing a tournament there or something like that, are you anticipating, what are you anticipating for income and, and for whom?
Yes. Yeah, so you know, currently the programs that we offer, there are fees associated with those programs. So that same concept would, you know, transfer into the indoor facility as well. So if we're holding, you know, youth basketball, those kids that participate in youth basketball pay a program fee. The same would hold, hold true here. As we expand our programming to include, you know, real young children or seniors, maybe we start a pickleball league. There will probably be a fee for that pickleball league. So there will be a fee associated with, with programs that go on in that facility.
And somebody just wants to come in to walk the track or to run? How do you, are you anticipating some kind of a, how, how would they be charged?
So, you know, we haven't worked out probably every detail, but you know, general operating normal business hours, you know, our Monday, you know, through Friday, when our staff is there, um, you know, if people want to come in and use it at that time, you know, it'll probably be open for them to use that. So if they would like to access a facility outside of our normal business hours, they'll probably access it through a FOB system and there'll probably be some sort of fee associated with obtaining a FOB.
Okay, thanks, Tim. I did have a question about the money that's been raised so far. Jordan, you say $600,000 charge? That's Kim.
Yes, so, so far we've raised, so we started our silent phase. We've started our silent phase twice, actually. We started our silent phase about a year ago. As you know, we were going to come present to you in April and due to the pandemic had to rearrange. But the silent phase of the capital campaign has began. We have been soliciting individuals and businesses throughout, throughout our community and county that have been traditionally solid supporters of this type of a program and this type of a campaign. And so we're doing pledges on a five-year pledge. And so we've raised a little over $600,000 in actual pledged funds. We have not actually started taking cash in at this point. That will start coming in, uh, this year we will start collecting on the pledges.
Pitches are a little over $5 million right now. Do you have other incomes in there? Or is all the rest of it from being envisioned to come from the county and the CAT grant?
So again, then our, our, after we finish our silent page, the CAT grant and get county and city funding, then we will go to a public phase, uh, which will be the spring and summer to raise the remaining funds that we need to, to reach that goal. Wanting to open it up to the entire community to provide a broad support across the entire community.
In Gates Hall, uh, with the set, with the sale of, sale of Gates Hall, that allowed an additional $910,000 to that, that dollar amount. So currently, you know, when, when we sell the facility, we will be at 5.4 million. With the $600,000 that we have already currently raised, we will be at 6 million. So that's, that's where we're at currently.
What are you, what is your bottom line on the grant? What are you asking in the CAT grant?
So, so we're gonna, we're intending to go in and, and ask for $900,000 on the CAT grant, understanding that, uh, you know, a lot of these things haven't yet come together. You know, the sale of Gates Hall hasn't come together. These pledges are just pledges, um, understanding that we can leverage, uh, real dollars from the state. That number may diminish to be our last dollars in. So if we're $754,000 short, our grant may be $754,000 that we asked for from the state. So we're going to modify that to, to, to base it on what, what our needs are to, in order to get us over the finish line. Additionally, that the estimate that we're working on with the 7 million, I think was put together last year, about the time that we were starting on this. So we are working through kind of updating that estimate to, to just ensure that our, our number that we're working with is, is pretty standard, pretty safe.
And John, you're, you're saying that before, when there was a CAT grant, they came back and said, the county's not putting in enough. Is that what you heard?
Yes. Yes, and I think, Tim, you could probably speak to that better than I could.
Yeah, so originally when we did the CAT grant the first time around, when we were doing SCORE, um, the request went to the county, county made a contribution, and I don't remember the dollars off the top of my head. But when the CAT grant was presented at the state level, um, it was returned to us and said, you know, we think your county needs to be more vested in this project. And so we came back and made an additional request to the county, which they very graciously, you know, agreed to and made that, that contribution. And so that was really what ensured the CAT grant success at that point.
Would that have been around 2003, 2004?
Yeah, probably.
Approximately.
Thousand in local option sales tax is what we, um, we put in there. See, I, I was just doing some adding numbers here. And here's where I'm a little confused, so let me ask. Everything you've said, and I know a lot of those are estimates, you've got 5.1 now, you've got, you're pretty sure of 900,000 for selling gates, so you're at 6 million. Am I correct?
Correct.
Correct.
And then you've got the CAT grant. What you're saying might be 900,000, but you're asking 600,000 from the county.
That, that would be the maximum we could ask on a CAT grant.
Is you're asking us 600, for 600,000 from us to match the CAT grant?
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a big portion of it. And I think one of the other components is that the 7 million doesn't have all of the, there, there's going to be some additional costs for tables and chairs and outfitting the offices, as well as the 900,000 that we're, we're hoping to get in the sale of Gates Hall. At this point, the city has yet to allocate those funds back to this project. Uh, and it's, it's anticipated that at least a portion of that may go towards kind of future operating costs or future program expansion costs as we need to add new equipment or things like that. So yes, if you, if you just add lump all the numbers together, it looks like we're way overshooting our expectations. But we, we did that in part because we know that everything won't always come together as, as we hope. You know, if everything came through, uh, we probably have enough to, to continue to add on and, and expand this project, add more programs and services than Tim and his staff can handle. But, uh, we know that not all of those dollars are going to come through.
I think another thing to, to add to that also, Linda, is, uh, you know, we did not hire a professional fundraiser. We're a very small group. But with our experience, uh, in professional fundraising as, as an organization, uh, when we did SCORE and one of those things, the pledges that we received from people, we understand that not 100% of that gets paid. So you do have to raise a margin above what is that. And then we also have an understanding that building costs have gone up exponentially during COVID and we have to be prepared for what that may be when we actually let this out for, uh, contract bidding.
Those are all good points. Those are all good points. What is your, my final question? What is your last date that you could possibly hear from us?
So it's based on the CAT grant? We have to have the CAT grant application in on?
Yeah, so it, it has to go in in April. It's an extensive application, so I've got to have at least some level of indication that there's going to be county support if we're going to go through the effort of putting the grant together. So, you know, the, the absolute last date would be probably at the end of March for us to be able to finalize the grant. That being said, the sooner that we have that indication, the quicker we can get our CAT grant buttoned up and put together, uh, so that we're not trying to rush through it at the last minute and, and get everything put together to submit. That being said, we know that our numbers are going to tweak up until the moment we hit submit, as we continue to hear from more and more of these, uh, these folks to the pledge and to the project.
Your $1 million estimate, when did you receive that? Who did it?
Oh, that's probably in excess of a year ago, for sure.
Yeah, it was before we started the project.
Before we started.
And it, she wants to know who the architects are, I think.
Oh, the architects would be Rose and Mackie Harris. And we've been working with Jeff Harris extensively on that over the last year.
Yes, and Tim, I'm sure I did address the first question I had to Jeff, but, and I may have called you Jeff and inadvertently because of that, but you answered it very well. And did I understand there is no equipment in that 7 million?
Yes, there is equipment in there. So, um, the, the items that are adhered to the walls, to the ceilings, um, you know, the basketball hoops, the curtains, those sorts of things are included in that 7 million. So we'll have to buy office furniture. We're going to have to buy affordable bleachers, those sorts of things.
Playground.
Playground equipment.
Yeah.
Sorry, I thought I was done with my questions.
No, it's okay. It's all right. It's all right.
I'm done now.
You're, you've answered a, a number of my questions.
That was happened.
So let's go, first I'll go to a supervisor's face. Will you have any additional questions?
Um, I think you've kind of already answered this one a little bit, but I was just wondering how much do you anticipate the general public being able to access the, the center?
I think the, I think the facility is really built for the general public. I mean, that's what we do is provide, you know, recreational opportunities for the community, partner a lot with Eastern Story County, as well as Ames and Huxley and Gilbert. So, um, you know, it is a, it is a facility that's going to be made for the public.
You know, and one of the things that we've also discussed is hopefully with, with finances allow, we'd like to hire a couple of part-time. And Tim briefly touched on the operating hours, which would be eight to five, Monday through Friday. But if we have the opportunity to hire a couple more people, we would be able to open the, the gym times longer hours. Therefore, we might be able to provide open gym time or open turf time or open play time for, for kids up there and for the parents to get together and just hang out while their kids are blowing off steam.
And one of the things, you know, I'm.
What I was asking about was open, open gym time. I, there are a lot, I know that there are a lot of different leagues and, and a lot of people looking for space, teams looking for space. I understand that the need for that. But I also know that other people who are not involved in different organized sports would also like to be able to access the, the center. And, you know, as someone who had kids that were involved in lots of different sports, we were also frustrated in, in other recreational places when we weren't able to just get in and use the facility because there were so many organized activities happening all the time that it was hard to find the time to just go and be without being organized. So I'm glad I'm hearing that's part of your thought process.
Yeah, and you know, a lot of our activities do happen on the weekends and, you know, we currently do a lot of weekend things now, but, and we have program supervisors for those activities. And so, um, you know, the facility will have a lot of use on the weekends, but certainly we'll be carving out time for just that, that free play, that open, open time where there is, you know, time to do things that aren't structured all the time.
I do want to note that we've had discussions with other nonprofit organizations and service clubs in the community who would like to use the common space also just to meet as a group. So it's not even a program or sport activity, but it's just the, um, you know, the, the feeling of community where groups can use the shared space. There's a lot of interest in that as well.
So, you know, one of the other things that I'd like to point out too, at this point is that, uh, you know, when, when we have programs going on, um, you know, we just have one fee. We do not have resident or non-resident fees. We just have one fee. And, uh, you know, if there's somebody that is struggling to come up with that fee, um, at the end of the day, we've never turned anybody away from participating in a program. So, um, you know, we try and make it affordable and easy to get into the programs that we offer, so, and that will continue.
Great. Are you done?
Almost, almost.
No, that's fine. That's fine.
So I, I do see all of the different, um, letters of support from the different, um, communities and the different, um, Parks and Recs. Are they talking about contributing at all? Have you talked to the cities? I'm not sure how that works exactly, um, but.
Yeah, so we, we did not ask any financial, uh, support from any of the communities. We just wanted their support, uh, for the project in general, because it will affect everybody in the county. So, um, we wanted everybody to have support for our project.
It's a beautiful facility. The plans are beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you may have just answered this question, but, um, I know SCORE stands for Story County Outdoor Recreation for Everyone, so it's all Story County residents. Is this going to be, is this going to be similar if I lived in Maxwell and I just wanted to come up here for a couple hours and run around, walk around the track, run around the track, get out of my house? Or just, you know, do whatever? Is that free to me as well?
Absolutely.
So there'll be open times where, for example, maybe on Wednesday afternoons from three to six, I'm just picking a time, but the, the, the track is open for anyone to walk. It's not necessarily a program and it would not matter where you are from Story County, we would open the doors. And then if there was a program, a walking program that was actually being run, it, again, Tim was trying to, to explain, we don't charge a fee that's different if you're from Nevada or if you're from Maxwell or if you're from Gilbert. It is the same fee no matter what for all of the Story County, resident or non-resident.
Pretty sure that was your intent, but I just wanted to double check on that. Thank you.
Yeah, no, glad you answered.
So I just have one question or maybe, maybe two. I think the virtue of being the last, the last one, most of your questions have already been asked and, and answered. I do recall, gosh, was it been six months at least, maybe longer, when I came over and we had the presentation and saw the 3D visual of, of the planned facility, which was very impressive. Um, and that is where I heard that it was going to be open to greater than just Nevada for the, for entire Story County, which I appreciated. My two questions are, back to the, you've got the silent phase where you were doing pledge or making pledges over a five-year plan or over five years? And yet you're, you're asking the county for three year, over three years. Could you just explain a little bit the difference there while you're looking at three years for us or five years? Or was that just a starting point for you?
No, we asked on the back.
Yeah.
We asked on the back end. So our five-year pledges start this year. So the campaign actually starts in '21, '22, '23, '24, '25. Our campaign will be done in '25. And so knowing that you had, uh, your TIF dollars allocated, uh, for some of those years, that's why we came on the back end for those three years at the back end of that, which would be the last three years of our campaign.
Thank you for clarifying that. And this is probably, you know, pie in the sky or very large guesstimate, estimate question is, uh, you said in the spring or summer, you'll go out for the public phase of fundraising. Do you have any like a target that you're looking at or what you think you might be able to fundraise? And will that be just in kind of the Nevada area or are you looking broader of Story County?
So typically, uh, the majority of your funds do come in the silent phase or larger gifts come in the silent phase. So what happens is you get a lot of smaller gifts, usually a large number of gifts, but not a large dollar amount on those gifts. Again, we'll be looking at manpower, the ability for us to go and solicit, uh, all of Story County for, for gifts of, of that size would be virtually impossible. But we will have some, um, opportunities where people will be able to come to an event if they would like to, uh, that will be open to the entire county to be able to make a contribution. But to actually go in door-to-door, uh, obviously not possible throughout the entire county. But again, the largest portion of our private donations will come in the silent phase.
We do currently have pledges though from, um, individuals outside of Nevada, if that was part of your question.
We do have some, and some Ames businesses that have contributed.
Yes.
Through your silent phase is what you're saying? They've contributed through your silent?
Yes, correct. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Let me go back a minute because when I was writing down numbers earlier, I wrote down 600,000 was the anticipation from the public phase. Was that incorrect? Did I just, that confused that with something else? I think John, Michelle or John.
600,000 is what we have committed right now, over five years. $600,000 is what we have committed right now over five years.
We did not have a number to just plug in on that public phase yet?
We did not.
And I did do that incorrectly. Okay.
Go ahead. Are you planning to have the estimates, redo the estimates considering the cost increase for construction? And is there any way to follow up and just get an adjusted estimate?
We'll be meeting with Jeff again here in the coming months and weeks. And so we'll look back at that number, but seven million is our target number still.
Maybe Jeff can touch on that a little bit as well.
Yeah, I was going to add, you know, we had Stecker Harmsen in Ames has done kind of a preliminary budget estimate on the project along with Central Iowa Building Systems. We had them look at the building component. So we will expand that once we get, you know, we have a real good kind of design development set of plans right now. As we get into construction documents, we will enhance that estimate and go back to Stecker Harmsen to do a more thorough, full takeoff on the costs. So we will definitely update that coming this spring.
Thank you. I don't expect you to have an answer to this, but I do think it's important to talk about, we're using, if we're talking about using TIF dollars, there are a lot of people outside of Nevada, it's going to be hard for them to access the services or the center. So we just want to make sure that they're part of our conversation because if it's for Story County, how do we make sure that everyone in Story County is able to enjoy the beautiful building?
So just as an example, you know, right now for the youth basketball program, grades one through six, we have 99 different teams that participate in that from around the county. And, you know, a lot of those games will be here, but a lot of those games are in the other communities as well. So, you know, part of it is travel to get to your different locations. But that's just an example of how many participants and teams that we do have on a county-wide level.
And if I recall from the presentation, I said they're always vying for space.
Yeah.
You know, they're competing with time and then the space.
Yeah.
Part of the big benefits of this facility will just be offering consistency for times and dates so that we're not bouncing around, you know. There's times now where we've got kids out well past eight o'clock, pushing nine o'clock on a school night for activities. And so this is really going to help in that endeavor as well.
One of the other things I've mentioned for accessibility is that our Score Park is well-connected to the trail system that exists within Nevada. And certainly we know that Story County and our community certainly wants to see that trail system expanded and connected to our other communities. So there will be some level of accessibility via biking at some point. I'm not sure the practicality of that all the time when coming over from Acollo or something like that. But certainly we understand that there are always going to be accessibility issues or travel issues for folks. But, you know, like any physical asset that would exist anywhere in the county, that's always going to be a challenge. But, you know, certainly being right on the highway provides the, probably the easiest accessibility for a facility like this that we could envision.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Discussion supervisors? I want to look at CAT grant information some more. And also kind of review our TIF projections. So I'm not prepared to make a motion today. I'd like some more information.
So when you say, just for clarification, you want to look at the CAT grant?
Well, I'm looking at their website right now and I see April 15th. I'm just trying to look and see what they've funded in the past, what kind of award we might be able to accept given that.
Lisa, this is Ted. Could I add one question that maybe Linda would appreciate too as she wants to research for the group? Is there, I know that Indianola has the Blake Field House, which I don't, is that a comparable facility? When you guys were developing this facility, it's clear that there's nothing like it in Story County. Can you explain like where you went or what you were looking at as kind of a comparable facility or what you hoped to kind of learn from other communities? What could we look at that this might turn out like?
We really didn't visit a whole lot of other communities. It's just been, you know, information gathered from surveys when we did this a number of years ago. It's just been additional information that we brought back just through our experiences in other communities and looking at what are, what really are specific needs for the community. So I cannot speak to the facility in Indianola. I have not been there. So we just felt that when we put this facility together, that it really just met the needs of what we were trying to accomplish.
So we had a lot of public forums before we got down to, as we mentioned in the story, at one time, you know, what the community wanted versus what the community could get.
Right.
So $18 million was what the community wanted with every bells and whistle and everything else. But we came to a realization that we couldn't support that kind of a vision. So I think that's part of our vision too, is it has to be the right size and at the right time.
And Linda, I mentioned one thing on the, you were asking about the CAT grants and certainly we can get all the information on CAT grants. I think the last couple of projects that I'm aware of in the county that were funded through CAT grants or in part through CAT grants that received them, the Miracle Park and Playground, I think it was just for the field component of that got a CAT grant with the tourism opportunity. And I think Roland's Pool in Stories, I know Story City's Pool got CAT grants, but I'm pretty confident that Roland's Pool also got CAT grants as part of their project and their fundraising there.
The other thing that I'm thinking of, I need to look back at is our own county's capital improvements plan and what we're planning for the next five years because there's some TIF in there and we don't have all the, there's some potential there. So we have to look at that as well. What aren't, you know, what might be coming up there? And we're in the, just started our budget work sessions. So it'll be a little while before we have a sense of just how all of that will come together.
Absolutely. And we knew that you guys were at the beginnings of the budget process and that's why we felt it was as opportune and needed to come to you guys now was to start this conversation. And certainly we put together the ask over those three years, looking at the TIF dollars. If there's a more appropriate way that you guys would like to participate in this project, we'd be open to that. Just understanding that we're trying to do this in a five-year capital campaign with a closeout in fiscal year 2025 is kind of the key component to that. But if there's, and we didn't speak with folks at the county and drill into these dollars and say, hey, how should we approach the supervisors? It was really a, we caught this on a board of supervisors agenda back in September and said, hey, this looks like this could be the best way for us to approach you all, knowing that we're going to see the value that TIF should ultimately be driving forward out of this facility. But certainly we'd be open to other conversations about how best for the county to approach this. And that's a decision for you all.
Sure. And I also appreciate the fact that, you know, you need to get started writing the grant, but, and that if you know in March, that's going to be helpful to you. I think that probably fits pretty well with our timelines in terms of budgeting. So you could, you'll, you know, as you write grants, you always work around the things that you don't know until the last minute, but I don't think we'll keep you. April 15th was the deadline for submission, so I don't think we'll, I think we can get back to you in plenty of time.
Did April 15th or April?
I just looked on the website. CAT applications are accepted quarterly, January 15, April 15, July 15, and October 15.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
If we can get back to you late in March, that gives you a couple weeks of grant, you know, completion. And I think this was good timing. I don't fault that at all. I think it worked out. That's all I have.
Thank you.
It would be helpful, sorry, I was just going to say it'd be helpful before the end of March if we had some indication of if you guys are looking to support the project. I don't know if even bringing forward to do some kind of resolution of support earlier on before figuring out that exact financial contribution. Just wanting to make sure that there is some level of expectation that you guys are going to be contributing to the project. Because at the end of the day, if you guys don't see the value in it and don't want to, going through the effort of the CAT grant, putting that together doesn't make sense because that is a hard and fast requirement under that grant.
Okay. Well, thank you. I don't know if there's any more questions. No, just thank you. Thanks for bringing it to us. I just wanted to make sure if anyone's going to be making a motion today, you know, that Supervisor Merkin and, nope. So, okay, so it sounds like what we'll do is we will be working through our, kind of our budgeting thing, get some additional questions answered. I know that Supervisor Merkin's already doing some additional research. We'll probably do some additional research or conversations with you and then probably put it back on the agenda at a later date so that you have more definitive answers of the direction that the board would like to go.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
We'll move on. Looks like we have a presentation from OPN Architects on the proposal for the Space Needs Study.
Hello, my name's Danielle Herman. I'm here to present for OPN Architects and I think we sent a presentation.
Yep, just a moment. She'll pull that up.
Okay. Thank you. Well, let me just start by saying thank you for the time today. We really appreciate being invited in to speak with all of you. I was asked to keep this brief, so the series of slides will, it kind of hits the highlights of what we submitted in our proposal and I'll just cover those very quickly. So go ahead and go to the next slide, please. So my name is Danielle Herman. I'm an associate principal at OPN Architects. In case you guys aren't familiar with OPN, I thought I'd just share a little bit about our firm. We're located in Des Moines, but we have four locations holistically with about 100 people or so in all four of those studios. Forty or 45 of them typically reside here in the Des Moines studio. And we're a very general practice firm, so we do just a little bit of everything, but we do quite a bit of work in planning, master planning and space assessments. Next slide, please. So the team we're proposing, I would be your primary point of contact. I would be involved in everything from the assessments to the programming and visioning and all the way through the planning. I'll be supported by one of our most senior project managers, Brett Mendenhall. He brings a wealth of experience and background to it. And then we have in-house interior design services as well. With us, we brought Story Construction, who is obviously located in Ames, to do all of the cost estimating, phasing, schedule, constructability, and just generally consult on all of the solutions, pros and cons, and be able to provide real-time feedback on solutions as we're assessing them with you. Next slide, please. So you had asked for a schedule and sort of tasks throughout the process. We put this together as a preliminary point for discussion with you all. It's about a five-month process, we believe, from start to finish. Could be more like five and a half, depending on the overlaps that we're showing and just the cadence of meetings that we're able to schedule and get. And that breaks down into obviously assessing the existing spaces with you, doing some visioning to talk about what we, where we want to land at the end of the day with the appropriate groups, conceptual programming with all of the stakeholder groups and users, and then really diving into the concepts and the planning. At the end of that, putting together the cost estimates and scenarios that are most favorable or most desired by you and producing a final deliverable that would document all of that. Next slide, please. And we certainly included an awful lot of project examples in our proposal response of the different planning and assessment work that we've done over the years. I'm happy to answer questions about any of those projects that you all may have. We thought that would be a better use of time than trying to dive into those here in our brief presentation. Next slide, please. And then I thought I would just highlight a couple of things that we offer as services that might be of interest to you as you're going through this process. So we have in-house drone photography and videography, which has served us really well for some of our assessment projects and just being able to get a nice broad understanding and documentation of sites. We also have in-house lidar building scanning, which for existing buildings, this has been a really helpful tool. If there are buildings that you don't have documents or current documents and information on, this is a really quick way for us to get information that's incredibly accurate and useful. So things that certainly we can have for the conversation about, but that might be unique opportunities if those are of interest to anyone. Next slide, please. So I think with that, I would just love to answer any questions you might have.
I'll turn to the boards. Do they have any questions? Supervisor Basil?
One specific question, the technology that you're talking about, those examples, are those part of the optional additional? So if we, if it turns out that's something that we would want, would that be in addition to the 32.5?
That's correct. Yeah, we don't, we try not to embed any of those services and inflate the cost for you all. Those are things that we like to have a conversation where we're sitting across the table and understand what's necessary. If you have all of your building documentation and it's not something that we need to do, we don't want to, we don't want to make those assumptions. But certainly if it's of interest and something, we want you to know that we have those capabilities in-house.
Thank you. I have a few questions. I think your quote was 32.5 plus reimbursables. What do you estimate the reimbursables would add?
I would probably like to just do a little bit of math and follow up with that answer if I could. Those reimbursables are largely just going to be some travel and then some printing of in-house documents. I can't imagine that's going to total up to a whole lot more than maybe $500 to $1,000 over the course of the entire project, just because I anticipate, especially with the environment that we're in, we may do a lot of meetings virtually, so there may not be all that much travel and printing. Printing usually comes up to, you know, a couple hundred dollars for final deliverable documents. So it doesn't add up to that much, but I can certainly pencil out a better and more accurate assumption of what those might look like if you'd like.
$500 to $1,000 is good enough for me. Okay. Secondly, would you just state what the focus of our study will be and maybe in 25 words or less from, you know, what conversations you get and the RFP we sent out? What do you think the focus is?
Well, our understanding of the focus is that you really want to understand how your current spaces are being utilized and where you can gain better efficiencies and understand how to better position all of the different groups, whether that's adjacencies, how they're working, and be able to prioritize the work that goes forward from there to position them better for the future and for growth.
Thank you. Next question is, of all the projects that you've done that you listed, I assume you listed every single project you've done, the ones that you thought were more relevant to the work we're asking, which one of those most resembles ours and in what way? And what did you do with that study?
Yeah, that's a fantastic question. I'm going to probably say the Carroll Study. It doesn't have as many buildings, but scale-wise, I think it's very similar. And because we studied lots of different options and scenarios for whether or not to reuse existing facilities, whether to add on to facilities or rather to acquire new facilities or build new buildings. So we looked at many different scenarios and studied a lot of different pros and cons based on what their needs were. And again, how we were going to share spaces between different use groups, how we were going to position them well for the future. So that has a lot of similarities, I think, to what you all are looking at doing and just some of the, some of the factors that we would be talking about with Story Construction as well.
And last question. Give me an example of maybe the best solution you have given to a customer that did not involve new construction and how and why did that work?
Yeah. So oftentimes we will assess for our clients whether or not it's more appropriate to save an existing building and rent to save an existing building and renovate it or whether or not it really is about moving on to a different facility, whether that's a new build or acquiring a property and fitting it out differently. I think when we talk about how to do that, we like to assess with the client alongside of the client, what the pros and cons of keeping any facility are. So it's not only the structure itself, but how can we think about reusing it? And oftentimes, we're able to highlight or be able to show ways that we can consider reusing structures that long-term not only have a better payback for you because you're not putting an entire building into a landfill, but that we can improve that facility and get you a better outcome at the end of the day, especially if facilities are centrally located, if they're already in a location where the community has access to them and is familiar with them. So there can often be pros to keeping those facilities as opposed to doing new facilities so that it's, it really is about what's going to be best for you and your community, all things considered.
You have one more question. You're familiar with working for county government, counties. So you know that county government is really an umbrella that has lots of different services in it. So I don't know how familiar you are with county services or how much you might need to learn about a certain aspect of our organization to help make the best possible recommendation. Is that any of that learning time, is that included in this proposal? You're not going to come back and say, gee, we have to spend another X thousand dollars figuring out what the treasurer does or what community services does or what secondary roads does?
Right. It is all included in our proposal. We assume that as part of that in-depth programming and analysis, that we're going to sit down and talk with every one of those groups about what their needs and long-term plans are and information that might already be out there. So we, we know even if we, even if we already knew all of your groups or we were familiar with other county groups, it doesn't mean that we're going to have a common understanding of what your specific needs or those specific departments' needs are and where they're at in their overall evolution and growth pattern. So we're going to need to do that regardless of who we're programming with and we planned that into, into the process.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
I just have one question for you. I'm just wondering, and I understand we're in a pandemic and much more is being done virtually, but I would just like to know a little bit more on kind of your time or what you're looking at for onsite review. We do have several buildings, so you know, I can't imagine, probably not going to be gathering up here for a couple hours. So can you just explain to me a little bit your process?
Yep. So typically what we'll do for those onsite reviews is make sure that we've got, whether it's one key individual or a couple of key individuals that will walk us through the facilities so that we can understand pros and cons of that current facility, what's working, what's not working. Nobody knows those buildings better than the people that live in them or run them, operate them every day. So we would plan to come up, we usually try to group buildings. We might spend a half a day per building, walking through, looking at everything, understanding things that are there, asking lots and lots of questions. But that's really the majority of the time with our current situation, the way that the pandemic has been, that we spend on time. We can, we can document an awful lot of the information in that amount of time and then a lot of the rest of those meetings where we're starting to discuss priorities and stakeholders, needs, wants, and coming back with review scenarios of concepts. We can do all of that virtually. So it really is, we're going to go, we're going to gather the information. We know we can always go back and get more if there's something that we, some detail we need to understand, but we'll focus, we'll focus on grouping times and heading from building to building within a fairly short amount of time or a short span of days and gather all of that information at one time.
Great. Thank you. That's all the only questions I have. Supervisors, any additional questions? Okay. Thank you so much for your presentation and your time today.
No problem. Thank you. It was great to meet you all.
Thanks. Next, we go on to a presentation from RMH Architects.
Okay, yeah, can you all hear me?
Good morning. Yes, still morning.
Yes, yes, it still is. My name is Jeff Harris with RMH Architects in Ames. I think I know many of you. We've been involved with projects over there. So again, I was just going to walk through quickly. We did not present or prepare any formal presentation to show on the screen, but I just wanted to walk through our proposal. I think you all have copies of that and kind of hit the highlights and then, yeah, leave the majority of the time available for questions. Again, we are Rosalind Mackey-Harris, located in Ames. We've been in Ames for about 32 years now. I would serve as the project manager, so I would be involved in every, every aspect of the work and involved in all of the meetings and all of the things that go on. Basically for, as we understand the services required, we kind of put together kind of a brief outline in our proposal of the services we would propose. We have worked on a number of your facilities, so I think we're fairly familiar with most of your buildings. I think that will be helpful to us going forward. But I think that we kind of broke it out into three phases just for timeline and then also for aspects of milestones along the way. So our first phase would kind of involve investigation, again, looking at those existing facilities, although we've been through a lot of them, I think we would want to do that in more detail. And then definitely meet with department heads and department personnel in all of the departments, take the time to go through their program, their thoughts, and then also their needs for growth going forward. And I think we're looking at kind of a five-year and a 10-year plan and how we address their needs in those timelines. So we would prepare basically a formal programming document for each of those departments, outlining their spaces, their personnel, how they utilize those spaces and probably go through one or two iterations of that programming document with them to kind of finalize and, and come up with what they see as their, their immediate needs plus their needs over those time spans of expansion. That would kind of complete that first investigation phase. Then we would move into more what we're calling evaluation, where we would be in the, in the buildings, again, walking through, looking at those spaces, seeing how they're utilizing the spaces now. We want to evaluate the things that are coming out of this pandemic and everything, the ability for people to work at home. A lot of our clients we're seeing now where we're minimizing built space because we're looking at alternative methods of employees engaging in their work, whether it's working at home or sharing space and utilizing different timeframes and different working hours for different employees, so how we can potentially save and maximize the efficiency of some of those. And then we want to look at how your departments work together, what, what areas are shared between departments in a common building, how we can maybe, again, minimize the need for expansion based on sharing those spaces and being more efficient in what they do right now. And then definitely look at their growth and how they can utilize sharing and those other options to potentially minimize their growth or their need for additional square footage in the future. And then, yeah, we would really jump into kind of a bigger planning phase where we would look at, look at the buildings, kind of analyze graphically for them how they're using the space now and how we can reutilize space and be more efficient in what we're doing. Look at potential expansion if that's what it comes to. And then again, work through pros and cons of those. What's, what's the best, the biggest advantage to the county, how they can maximize their space and minimize capital improvements if, as they go forward. So we would see again, a couple of iterations going through those possible scenarios with them and then with the county as a whole and looking at overall plans for the future. And then putting it together some budget estimates for those proposals as we move forward. We would utilize Stecker Harmsen. We use them, we've used them for many years. So we would use those for any cost estimating needs that we would have for this initial phase. Real briefly about our firm, like I say, I think you, most of you have been familiar with us. We've worked on a number of buildings in the county. Our staff, as I said, I'm kind of principal in charge, really the sole principal at the office right now. Lived in Story County for about 40 years. I didn't realize it'd been that long until I started doing the math yesterday and I thought, wow, that's been a long time. Our project architect we would assign would be Chris McIntosh. Chris has worked with your people, Joby, on a number of projects, is currently working on the HVAC improvements for the Justice Center. So we would maintain that relationship and keep Chris on the job. Again, Chris is a Colo native, born and raised in Colo, apparently lives in Nevada, so he's right there, close by. And then we do have in-house interior design as well. Shelley Meinhardt has been with our firm for about 25 years, so she would be on the project. She's again, worked with the county attorney's office pretty extensively on some of the master planning and schematic design that we did for them over the last couple of years. So she's involved with those people. Then in the proposal, I kind of put together a kind of a summary of the work we've done for the county. I don't need to expand upon that a whole lot right now. I just wanted you to be aware of the things we've done and the familiarity that we have with a lot of your facilities. We've worked on probably about all the facilities other than the administrative building. That's the one that we've, we've met there frequently, but we haven't really done much work in that building. But between the Justice Center, the Human Services Building, the Animal Control, we've worked on all of those buildings. So we have good familiarity with those and the people that are there. And then, yeah, I kind of put together two, what I felt were prime clients that we've had over the years and the projects that we've worked on for them, both McFarland Clinic and then Marshawn Medical Surgical Center. Done a lot of expansion and feasibility studies for McFarland over the years and really, like I said, been integral in a lot of their facility development all over central Iowa. And the same with Marshawn Hospital, participated in kind of a lot of projects for them, a lot of renovations and in their original buildings in downtown Marshalltown and then did participate with them on kind of a master planning study before they had made their decision to relocate. So those projects are there and I'm happy to answer questions about those or to expand upon those. And then schedule, yeah, we are ready. We're working on a large project now with McFarland that should be done, scheduled for issuing around February 1st. So I indicated that we'd be more than willing to have that team begin work around the first of February on your project. And then fee, we list our fee and list, basically that's an all-inclusive fee. We don't anticipate any other reimbursable expenses, just because we're here in the county, we wouldn't have any travel expenses or anything. So our fee is total, all-in fee. And then references, we listed kind of the three prime kind of community references that we have, but I, you know, just running down the list of people we've worked with at the county, starting with Cal Pearson and then Joby in facilities. With the supervisors, we've worked with Wayne Clinton, Rick Sanders. We spent a lot of time with Rick on the Justice Center work that we did four or five years ago and then Laura Olson as well. So with that, I would wrap it up and I open it up to any questions you'd have.
Thank you for your presentation, Supervisor Merkin. Any questions?
I'm going to ask some of the same questions. There's already answered a couple. One is the reimbursables would be included. Second, I asked Ms. Herman about learning time included and she said yes. And from what you said, all I should ask you is any learning time included in this?
Yeah, certainly. That's, that's, that's a fundamental part of the, our first phase is really learning from those departments. So, yeah, all of that time is anticipated and included.
Yep, I'm going to ask you three other questions that I asked Ms. Herman as well. So first, in 25 words or less, your words describe what you think the focus of our study is.
Yeah, I mean, I think the focus, as you presented it and as we did, is really to clarify how you use your space right now, you know, what's important to you and then how those needs as you expand and as you see future needs down the line, how we can accommodate that as efficiently as possible.
Okay. And secondly, what project have you done which is most, most similar or resembles ours most? Tell us a little bit about it.
Yeah, I thought about that as you asked that initially, but, and really there's probably a couple and it's really around the client or the projects that we listed. I mean, the McFarland work that we've done, I would say the project in Marshalltown initially, when we worked with them on their facility, you know, they had about eight, seven or eight different privately owned physician clinics in town. We really worked with all of those different entities to bring them all together into a common facility. So really looking at maximizing space, sharing efficiencies. Again, it's different because it was coming into a single facility, but I think it's similar in just how we utilized and how we brought those people together and found a common solution that everybody was happy with.
Those physicians, seven, eight physicians?
Oh, well, physician groups. So, you know, each of those groups consisted of multiple pediatricians or multiple family practice physicians that were all independent in their own facilities over there originally. And we've done many projects like that with McFarland, even in Ames. I think of the West Ames, which is the old Hy-Vee on West Ames. I mean, that basically we had a shell to work with and again, brought maybe five different departments together over there, utilizing an existing footprint and, and found a way for them all to coexist in that building.
Okay, thank you. And my last question now. Give me your best example whenever, when you've been able to find alternatives to new construction for a customer. And I guess, not like to remodel the Hy-Vee, it's something they're already using.
Yeah, and that's, again, we've done that many times with McFarland and their existing facility in Ames. We've probably remodeled every square foot of that building one way or another with, as departments move and shift around. They did do a fairly significant expansion in 1990 that we worked on, but as part of that, they really have renovated, like I say, almost all of their original buildings. So I think we've been very successful for them working through those issues. I think that speaks to why we've worked for them for 30 years, almost exclusively. And they are very cost conscientious about how they expand, so we have really spent a lot of time with them, just modifying existing buildings to move people and to readapt space.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Okay, yep, thank you.
Supervisor Basil?
I should have asked the other group this too, but I'm just wondering, so it seems like businesses were moving towards open floor plans and lots of space and everybody being able to see each other and come and go and now everything's changing with the pandemic. I'm just wondering about how you're feeling about that change? What's that been like for you so far as far as planning?
Yeah. Well, I think, yeah, we already spoke a little bit about just the, the work from home component is, I think, you know, it's significant right now. I'm not sure how long that's going to hold on. I mean, I think there's still value to people being together and working, you know, we in our office, we've essentially been in the office because we collaborate so much, you know, on a almost constant basis. So, I mean, I think there's still value to that and I think people will still want to do that in the long term. But it's certainly making a difference in the program that we're doing for McFarland right now in Marshalltown. You know, they are essentially, there, a lot of their clerical people are working from home and they're, they're building less space because of that. So I think there are certainly opportunities to do that and maybe some of the sharing space where you're working alternative hours with people is going to minimize the amount of built space that we'll need.
But that just lends, and I should ask, since you asked that Supervisor Basil, when you look or discuss with the different departments and kind of look at whether someone could work remotely, I guess, do you also inquire about the stability of their broadband to be able to complete their jobs as well, to take that in consideration if you're looking at a remodel as well?
Yeah, I mean, I think, yes, that's certainly an integral part of it is that, yeah, those people have to have the ability to work and to not have their work interrupted by that. And that's, that's where I see it still as, you know, long-term, it'll be interesting to see how that plays out because it will, it'll be of major impact.
And then I'm going to ask a question. Thank you. Then I'm going to ask the question I asked before is, I'm assuming you'll have time onsite. So can you just talk a little bit about that process for you, for us, on how you would review onsite? And again, would assume you'd probably do some that necessarily not onsite by Zoom or hotels or whatever, since you are right here in the community as well?
Yeah, we will do some that way. I mean, we, we still prefer to meet, you know, across the town. I mean, we still prefer to meet, you know, across the table if we can to go through that, but, yeah, I think all of our time, similar, where we would see spending, you know, half a day with one or two departments probably, first in kind of a sit-down session. It seems like people always kind of want to go through that in kind of a programming phase, but then I think getting out and seeing their spaces and seeing how they use it is really critical.
That's all of my questions. Any additional that could come up? No? Okay, thank you very much for your presentation today.
Yep, thank you all very much, too.
Appreciate your time. Okay, we'll move on. There are no agency reports.
Are we going to make a decision?
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I can step back. We have on here on the agenda just the presentations, just presentations.
Okay.
So I don't think we can make a motion on, if we're just having the presentation.
No, we don't. I didn't notice that.
Yeah.
So should we put it on the agenda for next week?
Yes.
Okay.
Good. All right. Consideration of minutes? There are no minutes, is that correct? Because I got no minutes. Is there a motion to consider the personnel actions as presented?
I move to approve personnel actions as presented.
Is there a second? It's been approved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Tedden? Aye. Consent agenda, does anyone pulling anything from consent agenda? No? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So.
Merkin motions, Basil seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Tedden's? Aye. Let me get to the next page. Where are we at? All right. Public hearing items. We have no public hearing items. So we're on to additional items. We have discussion and consideration on recommendation for granting of surplus Story County radio equipment, the third offering.
Okay, I thought I was putting this on the consent agenda, and then I realized that Supervisor Basil hadn't had history on this before, so I thought I would just put it on as an additional item, and we can discuss it, and I'm trying to find your report. Hold on a second. Very long consent agenda.
Yes, I know, that's why I said that.
Yes, okay. These were radios that were bought by Story County with us for the Storycom project, and when I came on the board and took over from Supervisor Sanders as our Storycom representative, I spoke with the sheriff and with our emergency management administrator, and we made the decision or that we decided that we really weren't going to deploy all those radios that we had purchased. And some of those were going to go to EMA from Story County. So we made the decision that we didn't want to let all this brand-new technology just sit on the shelf and get dusty, and four years from now, somebody finds it and says, well, this is outdated or whatever. We also knew that several of the local, particularly the fire agencies, the on-jet fire agencies, didn't have the monies to buy all of the radios that they needed to equip people. So we went into, and I want to thank Nicholas Lenny and Devin McKenna at the Sheriff's Office, and also Tom Hackett with Ames Fire Department, because they formed a committee to, and we sent out three offerings to date. There's a TWO, we sent out two offerings previously, since TO is the number, T-W-O. We've, in July, we distributed, or maybe decision, we got 10 portable radios and two mobiles to various fire agencies, and October, 10 portables, and those went to both fire departments and law enforcement agencies. Since we still had 26 left, and we had contacted those entities twice, Deputy Sheriff Lenny said, let's talk to the school districts, because it would be good for them to have radios as well. We received 27 requests for 26 radios, recommended that we grant all of those requests to transfer those radios, with the exception of Nevada, we get three instead of four, because they wanted one for their district office, as well as all their other buildings and everybody else just asked for one for building. So that was how we did that. The conditions are in here that we want them placed on active use, not just put on a shelf, you know, in their office to gather dust for four years and become obsolete. We wanted them out there. That means that they will pay the service fees that are due to Storycom for being on the Storycom system. They're signing agreements saying they would do that. The schools actually will probably, will have a higher charge, because a 911 service board pays half of the service fee for the public safety agencies, but would not do so for the public schools, because they're not technically a public safety. But they understood all of that. So I would, I would, if, I can answer any questions, but I can make, I think it's my turn to make a motion.
I don't have any questions. I think it's great, though, that you found ways to utilize those, all the different ways you were able to get that, so.
And I really want to thank the people who, you know, worked on this, reviewed all those applications, because they, they're all public safety communications people. They knew what was, you know, they know what the needs are, and they were able to do that. So I think, yeah, I think it's a good thing to get them. Supervisor Tedden, do you have any questions?
I do not have any questions.
I think I, if you don't mind, then I would make a motion that we grant surplus Story County radio equipment to the public schools that are listed in the documentation.
Supervisor Merkin made the motion for granting of the surplus Story County radio equipment to the schools as listed. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Tedden's? Aye. Nice work. Now we'll move on to discussion and consideration of a request to consider an Ames Urban Fringe Plan Land Use Framework Map Amendment. Amelia?
Yes, good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm just going to share my screen so we can look at the maps of this request together. Okay, can we see that?
Yes.
Great. So this request, I'm just going to keep it brief. You saw a similar request in August of 2020 for just the Larson leasing property, which is the southernmost property at the corner of Highway 30 and 580th for an amendment to planned industrial in the Ames Urban Fringe Plan to allow the annexation and development of that property. The city has now come back and included the adjacent properties, so they're highlighted in yellow on this map as part of that amendment request. So basically, what you have before you today is action to allow the city and Larson leasing to move forward with the actual submittal of an application for this amendment. So it's not action approving it, it's just allowing them to make a submittal. I can take any questions or provide any other information that you'd like.
Supervisor Basil, do you have any questions? Just a comment that, to correct that Scrivener's error in the report about the date, in the second-to-last paragraph.
Oh, yes. Thank you for bringing that up. The city of Ames sent us the request for this enlarged amendment on December 31st, 2020, not 2021. And I guess I would also add at this point, we did route this just for preliminary comments from county departments, and they noted that, you know, the interchange for 580th from Highway 30 will be going through this property. And so I think the city is aware of that, as is the applicant, which is why they would like to annex this property and control how it development develops. And then there was also a note that city services infrastructure wouldn't be extended at this point, so we'll have to do some further looking with environmental health at the proposed uses and the septic systems on the property.
Thank you. Supervisor Merkin, any questions?
Well, I did have one, and I'm trying to quite, I'm going to put it back together, because I read this a few days ago, and I should have looked at it again. I was looking at Ames Council report, and it's not really formal, man, it's a staff report. I was really confused about what they decided to do in terms of, the motion that was made, I couldn't find in here. Did they vote for the motion which was including, which would lead to annexation?
Yes, I confirmed that with staff after reading those documents as well.
I was, I just wasn't sure, and I didn't go back to see if they had minutes done yet. I figured they didn't, and this was what they had. But if you could turn that, Amelia, I appreciate that.
Yes, I did. Thank you.
No further questions.
Okay, any additional? And I don't have any questions at this time. So is there a motion to consider an Ames Urban Fringe Plan Land Use Framework Map Amendment for the property at 23959 580th Avenue and for the adjacent area?
Tell vote.
Been moved by Supervisor Basil. There a second?
I'll second for purposes of discussion.
Okay. That's been seconded by Supervisor Merkin for discussion. Open that up for discussion.
So just, Amelia, I just want to make sure we can get our wording right here. Are we considering an amendment, or are we voting on an amendment?
You're considering, the language in the plan is to allow consideration of an amendment, so it's essentially allowing them to submit an application. And that's the same language that the Ames Council used, I believe.
That's, that's fine. I just wanted to double-check that we had, we were, you know, that we had it correctly on the agenda in terms of what we're specifically being asked to do. So we're just saying, move forward, we'll decide on it, we'll vote on this again later.
Exactly.
No further questions.
Okay, all right, it's been moved and seconded. We'll go for a vote. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Tedden's? Aye. Approved. Thank you, Amelia, for your time and presentation.
Thank you.
And now we'll move on to department reports. We have a report from the engineer. Good morning, Darren. We have your report, so I'm just wondering if you want to highlight some areas from your report?
Sure. Me, I'll just throw that up here. First, under maintenance work, just a couple of quick comments. One, we got all the deracial debris cleaned up before winter hit us, so we got all that stockpiled in the two debris sites. We were anticipating the state shipping contractor to come in over the weekend, but as of yesterday, they still hadn't moved any equipment in yet, but we expect to see that soon up at the Milford The winter so far has been very manageable for us. We've had two more major snow events, but they, we handled them pretty easily, and we had lots of time afterward to clean up, so difficulty comes when you get one on top of the other. So, so far, this has been pretty good. Had some COVID concerns with meeting our essential duties of maintaining the roads this winter. If we had an outbreak in the department, we've had a handful of cases, but they've been spread out, and there's been no internal spread of COVID, so we've managed well with that so far this year. Hopefully, that will continue. Moving down, construction updates on what we got completed in 2020, and then I gave you a listing of what's planned in 2021 and the proposed letting dates there. Construction project design, the 13th Street project, just a quick update that I did see the city of Ames did approve the city in Nevada's annexation request to go over the border there of 590th. So that was the first step. We wanted to make sure the city would be able to annex that, and they, they will be able to. So the next step is to, we're waiting on Verbio to kind of solidify their employment numbers for that RISE grant, and then we'll be coming as a group back to the board to discuss that RISE grant application again. Road use tax issues, good news there. We were anticipating a pretty good shortfall due to COVID. People were driving less, but the latest estimate from the DOT on this current fiscal year is maybe a 4% reduction. We were anticipating closer to a 10%. So the 4% will be easy, easily manageable by us, so our concerns are somewhat lessened in that area. Lastly, wanted to touch base, five-year construction program work session. We usually do that on a Tuesday afternoon after a board meeting day. I'm looking for dates in late February to do that five-year program discussion. I'll work with Sander to set that date. So that will be coming soon. And then I did not comment in the report, our biannual bridge inspections are currently going on. They inspect every bridge in the county. That usually results in a few bridges that we have to quickly load post lower or possibly close. So far, I think they're maybe three-quarters of the way through the county, and we've only had one deck issue that we're able to fix fairly quickly. So, so far, so good on the bridge inspections. I think that's all I have to highlight, so any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. Any questions?
I just want to thank Darren on all the good work, um, after the deracial by secondary roads crews, the cleanup that they did was, they had a ransom act to do, and I want to thank you and them for the coordination with planning and development on the debris site. That was our first for Story County. I think that helped residents in the unincorporated areas, as well as helping your department, and you made good use of it for the northern part of the county, so just wanted to thank you for that. Also, I hope we can get something done on that Ken Merrill Bridge, because it's winter now, and it's not as much of a danger, but as weather gets nice again and people start walking around there, I'm concerned from what I saw that of people doing, people going out on there. It is not safe, and it looks like a lark and a really fun thing to do, but I'm just so afraid somebody's going to get hurt there.
Yeah, I think when weather conditions allow, I think we'll go in there with the excavator and just pull some of that back. You have to kind of risk your life to get on there the way it is, but if we pull this a little bit back, I don't think anybody will try it, and that'd be a good thing to get rid of, until we decide what we want to do permanently.
That's a good idea, to make it less accessible.
Yeah.
Supervisor Basil, any questions?
No, just thank you very much. Darren, I just have one question for you. I just, the engine brake ordinance request, so are you getting a large volume of residents on Riverside Road that are contacting you regarding that?
It was a handful, right in the curves there, and we've put that off due to the pandemic, and I've kind of kept them updated, but I was kind of hoping to wait till we had public come into the board meetings again, but we might just need to do that on Zoom at some point here in the next month or two.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you for your report, Jim. Please thank your staff for all of their work, and I'll put knock on the wood that we won't have significant winter weather. I know it's still early January, but, you know, I can be helpful.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on. We don't have any other reports, anything for an upcoming agenda? It looks like we will have the two presenters today for consideration on an upcoming agenda. So Leanne, would you be putting that on? Okay, thank you. Anything else that, for an upcoming agenda, that we're aware of at this time? Nothing? Okay.
We're so immersed in budget right now, can't think of anything else.
I know, I know. We'll move on to public forum number two. Open, we'll open the meeting for public forum number two. These are comments from the public, items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of upper meetings law, but may do so in the future. Is there anyone who'd like to make any public comments? If so, please raise your hand on Zoom or hit pound, the pound six?
Star nine.
Star six. Star nine. Star nine. I guess it depends what electronic mode we're doing. If it's pound, star, seeing none, we'll close public comment number two. We'll move on to liaison assignments.
We'll move on to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates, and any announcements from the supervisors. Supervisor Faisal, would you like to start?
Sure, just budget sessions for the rest of the week, and I have an eviction crisis workshop that I am going to be attending on Zoom. Originally, we had the new officer school scheduled this week, but that's all gone virtual, so those two days have opened up. I also have a meeting scheduled with Andrew Collins from the Story County Housing Trust Fund, just to go over some things with him because their upcoming board meeting that I would be attending is in the middle of one of our budget sessions. So I'm just going to go over a few things with him this week, and then Friday, Story County College Access Network.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Merkin?
It looks to me like all I have this week is our budget work sessions, plus we'll have CCMT this Wednesday. And I did miss conservation board last night, so I don't have any report from that. I think that's pretty much it. Next, Monday, the 18th is MLK celebration day. Remind everybody of that.
That's it. And I believe that's virtual.
It is.
Yes.
Facebook live.
Right. Six o'clock, yes.
I bet 6:30, but sometimes I just move on my calendar. So it's worth checking, yeah.
Yep, yep. So I have the same as you two, the budget meetings and CCMT. I have on my calendar too that I have an AEDC meeting at 7:00 a.m. on Friday, so I'll probably do that one. I think it only lasts an hour, I'll probably do that one from home and then be on into the office here that morning, and then as well that evening on the 18th, I will participate in the MLK presentation, so. All right. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Teddins?
Aye.
We are adjourned.